Catholic churches, if you would stand for invocation and remain standing, I would pledge allegiance to the Lord God.
Name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen. Gracious God, we give you thanks for the blessings of our nation, our state, and of our city here in Ironton. And we give you thanks for the blessings of the council that is here to help direct and guide our city. Help us to do what is right, to ever bring your goodness and peace into this world, and bless our actions and all that we do. We ask this in your holy name for your God forever endeavor. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you, brother Morton.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Cleary.
Here.
Hany.
Here.
Harvey.
Here.
Hawk.
Here.
Klein.
Here.
Harry.
Here.
Pierce.
Uh, just make note, Mr. Pierce did contact me and made note that he was visiting his mother. She may be dealing with health problems. But he told me earlier this week he wouldn't make it. Actually, last week. Next on the agenda, we have approval minutes from the regular council meeting of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, the finance committee meeting of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three, and the public utilities committee meeting of March twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. If we have any edits additions or admissions to those minutes. On the same month, those minutes will stand as approved. Uh, next, uh, we have office participation. Uh, we do have the mayor who wants to make a, uh, so.
I just wanted to welcome, introduce, and recognize our newest chief of police for the city of Ironton, Dan Thompson.
Congratulations, chief. Appreciate you. Anything else? Good. All right. Uh, any other audience participation? Uh, if you'd step to podium, state your name and address, uh, and any comments or concerns you'd have and want to address council.
Yes, I am. My name's Jay Seale. I'm with Aspen Energy, under forty-seven Timber Oak Court in Powell Island. Uh, here before you tonight as it's time to take a look at renewing the electric and natural gas aggregation programs. And, uh, we've been watching the market, uh, looking at it, trying to find the best opportunity. Uh, utility rates have been really high. And, uh, the power prices through AEP are set to jump, uh, from where they've been here in June. Uh, your current agreement with DynaG is up here, um, at the end of May. So, it's, uh, we're definitely out of crunch time of, of, uh, time to move on. And it's actually worked out well with where the markets moved as well. Uh, we're able to offer a fixed price today, uh, starting, uh, in June. Uh, the fixed price is six point nine seven five cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, really competitive rate. Uh, AEP is set to move to eleven cents, around eleven cents here starting June. So, it's gonna be a really significant savings for folks. Uh, folks always have their way to opt out if they wanna go shop on their own as well. But it's giving people a better option from the city. Um, Aspen has worked with the city since the inception of the aggregation programs in November of twenty-fifteen is when the original vote was. So, uh, savings pretty, pretty significant on electric. Uh, it also comes with a fifty thousand dollar community grant that you all can use for projects if you have immediate improvement, uh, issues to, to address. Uh, it's also time right now to, uh, to implement the gas aggregation program. It's actually been dormant for a while. And, um, we can, we can come with the savings right now, um, and implement that at sixty-one point four cents per CCF. Last year, uh, Columbia Gas of Ohio averaged eighty-five cents. So, um, it's a, it's a, it's a solid rate. Again, it comes with no opt-out fees, so anytime anybody wants to shop on their own, they can. But, uh, it's really just giving folks a better option again on gas, uh, to re-implement that program. And really, you're trying to save folks money in the wintertime. Uh, last winter, last, last year, Columbia Gas beat it a buck ten. So, sixty-one point four should perform well compared to that. And again, if it doesn't, people can opt out. So, uh, again, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. I really appreciate you taking a couple minutes to, uh, to let me address council. And, uh, I think it's a great time right now to renew this and, and, uh, secure some savings for folks there in the community.
Bob?
Yeah. Terry, are you guys gonna send out letters to all residents?
Yeah.
For this?
Yeah, there's gonna be opt-out letters as they come, uh, that, that we run through the public utilities commission of Ohio. But yeah, there will be newsletters coming out on both gas and electric.
Yeah, and a lot of questions, whether they get the letter or anything.
Yeah.
And the six point nine seven five, was that gas or electric?
That's electric.
Electric.
Yep. So, that's, that's compared to apples to apples to that, what we're expecting right around eleven for AEP. As far as those calls go, send them my way. We're happy to help folks who have questions. Um, you know, if they wanna opt out, we can help them opt out. If they have questions about the market, electric or gas, we're happy to help them, uh, address those questions as well. So, we'll take the calls if you can get them.
Just wanted to be clear, they're automatically enrolled. It's up to them to opt out at this block rate for our.
Correct. Per the opt-out aggregation program that was voted in by, by the people, so.
And Professor, is there anything that you need from our body as far as that contract? Do you have any of that stuff prepared, or what's the timeline on that?
Yeah, so we actually on electric, we really need, um, action tonight. If you guys would be able to, to be able to, I sent everything over to Terry, um, Smith, and, and, uh, set ordinances and stuff to be sent over to legal for review. I don't know if that's been approached or not. But on electric, for folks not to get, uh, sent back to, back to AEP and, and get that around eleven cents, you, you really need to take action tonight. If we missed it, it can't happen, okay? But folks will be getting sent back to AEP, and the calls will increase greatly, so.
Chris, do you have cards or collateral or anything?
Yes, yes, of course.
Okay, so, did, what we're saying is, like, we couldn't do this next week 'cause there is, uh, there's nothing on the agenda tonight.
Okay.
That's correct.
Yeah, and, and, do you have sample legislation to send us?
Uh, yeah, I sent it over to Terry. I'm happy to send it to you all as well.
I'd be happy to sponsor that, Sam. And the one thing that, the one thing, uh, that adds to the confusion is if you already have an aggregation on your, on your utility bill, like, if, if I had already gone with Aspen personally, and someone else was doing our aggregation, then I don't, I don't, I'm not opting in, and I don't get an opt-out number. So, nothing changes for that consumer as well.
I, I, no, I've got questions that, that, that come to me every time we're up for this. Now, you know, we've got a lot of residents on budgets. We've got a lot of residents on PIP. We've got a lot of residents on, you know, EEP. Chief, they're all, everything like that. Are, are they eligible? They already in? I mean.
So, the folks that have budget billing can participate in the program. Folks that are on PIP get a better deal that way, so. Yeah, they.
Same EEP?
Yeah, right, so.
Good for the EEP or not?
Right. And then anybody with a supplier, you know, would have to call and opt into it. They would need to look at early termination fees with their current agreement. They do a little math, and we're happy to help with that process as well, is, hey, let's look at it and see if this makes sense for you to jump in. But folks that are just with AEP right now, they're looking at a huge increase. We're talking about, you know, three hundred fifty, four hundred dollars a year savings for folks, per household on average. So, it's really substantial. And, uh, if we weren't able to get something going tonight, folks would get a letter that sends them back to, to AEP, and then we could, we could look at like a July start. But if, if we could act tonight somehow, it would be, uh, seamless. There wouldn't be any, any letters, you know, alerting folks to go back to AEP. Service to stay the same. DynaG, the incumbent supplier, would still continue to, to enroll, uh, folks and keep the current customers at the current rate. So, I don't know if there's any way that you guys can act tonight. If you can, great. If not, you know.
Their service doesn't conclude until the end of May.
Yeah.
Which is like, what, the four point eight seven cents?
Correct.
So, it will be two cents, which I understand are two cents, which is better than going to eleven.
Yeah.
But is the necessity because you're assuming that it's going to take thirty days to go into effect with us?
There's a timeline with it. We've actually kind of pushed it with DynaG, the supplier, to be able to, to keep it so it's seamless. And so, folks don't get sent back. They said, hey, we're gonna have to have something done tonight. Like, we, we would need to sign a contract, you know, tomorrow, early morning, to be able to hedge an energy on it. Um, if folks need to go back and can't do anything tonight, okay, it's just, it's gonna be a little bit more hairy of a process. You know, we're gonna have more calls and more, you know, it's gonna be a little tougher, but we can do it.
From my understanding, there was this process of having a authorization just to negotiate the contract, and then we can come back with the contract to then.
Okay.
Wasn't that what you were proposing to be?
So, the letter of authorization allowed us to get load data from AEP, um, and then I, I had come back to, to Terry, um, with sample ordinances and pricing and everything to be able to move tonight, to be able to have emergency legislation approved tonight. Uh, I think she's on vacation, so. Yeah, so, you know, kind of is what it is on a, maybe.
Chris, is DynaG currently promoted?
No, DynaG on electric, it's Constellation New Energy, who's, uh, been the provider historically. Um, so, it's two different companies.
So, as broker, do you have any pull on this, uh, that if we can't get an answer tonight, that, that we have a couple weeks to meet in or not?
Uh, so, if we don't get an answer tonight, uh, we would just look to the next meeting to have legislation in front of you. Um, you know, I, I think we might have the same start date on natural gas. Electric would get pushed back to like a July start. So, all the folks that are in the current program at four point eight seven cents, maybe something like that, would all go back to AEP, and when that June increase hits, everybody's gonna get that huge increase for that one month. Maybe, yeah, one month. And then we can start it back in July if, if we need to do.
So, even if we pass it as an emergency, I'd like to have a solicitor here. Um, even if we pass it as an emergency where it immediately takes effect next meeting, we would still be missing the mark?
Yeah, so, it really needed to happen today and.
So, if we call a special meeting, I mean, what's your top ten date today?
Uh, yeah, I mean, it's pretty much tomorrow morning from what I, from what I can tell. I mean, I can get on the horn or as soon as I leave here and try and, you know, see if there's anything we can do if we call a special meeting. But I'm pretty sure from my discussions with DynaG that we would be looking at like a July start and everybody going back, so.
And no one else other than DynaG?
There, there are other suppliers out there, uh, but they all work on the same timeline. And actually, DynaG being the incumbent has advantage with that because they're able to then know who the current enrollments are and the current participants, and then feed in the folks that are just with the utility. So, it's, uh, they're kind of in a unique position being the, the incumbent, uh, here to be able to get something going if we were able to move tonight. But it, it doesn't look like that's a possibility, right?
What we all have on the agenda, and, um, the earliest we can do it would be forty-eight hours Monday. It'd be, it'd have to be Monday. Uh, and we could get six people there for a meeting. Well, I, I, I understand the importance of this. I, I didn't know it was up, and I'd gotten some phone calls about, you know, people saying that it was gonna be canceled, gonna be canceled, but I didn't realize it was this time sensitive. Uh, this is the first really, uh, discussion I've had on the gas and electric aggregation other than when I, I got a phone call and I called Mr. Harvey here. And, uh, I don't know, I, I hate it, but it's, it's not on there tonight, um, but it would like.
Would either of those providers, uh, DynaG especially, I guess, would they be able to operate kind of a, an incentive or rebate for anybody that does get stuck in that Bermuda Triangle for that thirty days, you know, moving forward?
I mean, I could, I could approach her with them. I know, just from, you know, having discussions with them, they were like, hey, you know, as long as you've got, you know, emergency legislation in front of them and they were able to move tonight, we can do it. They were like, it'll be really tight, but we can make it happen. I'll do everything I can to try and make it so folks don't get sent back to the utility because that, it, it's just a big customer service issue at that point where you got a bunch of folks that, you know, are gonna be paying more money as well. It's just, it's, it's rough. So, I, I'll do everything I can, but if, if we're unable to do something with that, we'd be looking at a July start for everybody on both gas and electric aggregations. We can make it happen if you all passed emergency legislation at the next meeting. Um, and just push back the timeline a little bit. It, you know, and make things a little bit more difficult and folks pay more money.
President, you said, I mean, we possibly could get together a meeting Monday, uh, emergency meeting for Monday, if we can get six of us here to do that.
Okay.
Solicitors, uh, maybe back Monday?
Yeah, that should reach from October.
So.
Can, yeah, can you get an answer for us tonight before you leave?
Y'all go out right now, make a phone call, and.
Another question.
Sure.
Is this for residential businesses?
Yeah, it's small commercial. So, it'd be, uh, everybody that's five thousand CCF's and under would qualify as non-mercatile. Small commercial accounts, uh, on electric, it's seven hundred thousand kilowatt, excuse me, seven hundred thousand kilowatt hours and under. So, we qualify for this as well.
Seven hundred and under?
Seven hundred thousand kilowatt hours, excuse me. And it's five thousand CCF's annually. So, it's, it's residential and small commercial, how they deem it. So, if you'd like me to make a phone call, I'm happy.
I, I would, and, uh, don't care to hang around and, you know, 'cause obviously, I'd like to, I don't want anybody to get hit with some type of, you know, that powerful, uh, energy bill for, for, you know, for thirty days here. So, um, yeah, if you can get on, if you can get on the line right now and give us an answer. Because, I mean, if, if they're not gonna give us until Monday, then we'll just kind of make sure we can get on the next agenda. But I, I mean, if it's gonna be make or break, I would say we'd get six people here Monday.
Okay.
If, if you can kind of guarantee that, that everything will flow smoothly if we pass it Monday.
Remind them that this weekend is Orthodox Easter, maybe that'll happen.
Right. All right, I'll throw it out there. But, yeah, we'll do the best we can either way, you know, we'll, we'll get it taken care of and, you know, get it worked out either way. Hopefully, we can avoid that, um, you know, high bill for everybody in, in, in June. So, I'll get on the phone and I'll, I'll be around and discuss. Thank you very much. Really appreciate it. We're gonna pass, or? Yes, yeah, I've got it with me. So, if you'd like me to come around and pass it, I'll.
Hand it to one side of you.
Okay.
Thank you. We'll need a couple of things. There's a couple we learn here.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you.
All righty, moving on. Any other participation tonight? Uh, next, moving on to communications. There are none. Reports, there are none. Moving on to ordinances. Mark, would you please give ordinance twenty-three, twenty-four, first reading?
Setting a speed limit for trains operating in the city of Ironton, Ohio, declaring emergency first reading.
I, uh, do have a little bit of discussion on this. This is something that, uh, you know, trains seem to be, they, you know, it was, there was derailments and everything. Um, I got a bunch of phone calls from people who's, who's relevant to board, I guess, the train, uh, property, the railroad company's property. Um, doing some digging, uh, I found out that the actual speed limit through town was forty miles an hour. Uh, this ordinance would reduce it to twenty-five miles an hour. There's two positives, I think, this would happen. In the recent, you know, research I did, um, said, you know, the cities that had, or, or townships or whatever it was, they had speed limits of, of twenty-five fewer miles per hour going through their city limits or township limits, whatever. Um, there's a statistic that said they had fewer derailments. Um, two, as I talked to John Eland a lot about this one evening, and, uh, we were discussing the coal, the coal dust. Uh, I think that would, would help with the coal dust coming up. I don't think we have a lot of railroad crossings, but that's gonna tie up people from, from getting to and from twenty-five miles an hour. Like I said, along with that, I, you know, we can give this three readings, get more input, do whatever, but, uh, Mary?
I, um, I think Portsmouth has one because they got stuff behind their training and trying to go all around their whole city, trying to avoid it. And it was moving real slow through there. So, that might be someone who's got it already. And coal dust thing, I'm free, the mercury and coal, which been able to see spikes at times at the wastewater sampling. You know, just 'cause that dust is rolling off the railroad track.
Ryan Meyer or.
Um, no. Uh, yeah, that's why, that train is, is extremely slow through there. I can see it over there.
Oh, yeah, for the record, for the record, I want to make clarification. Wastewater Treatment Plant, being the sewer plant where the mercury was tested. Or the water trap.
Do we, how do we enforce the twenty miles per hour? The police, they clock that? I said, we could get the waste department caught, and we set it off, don't. We, we, we got the hour we want, I mean.
Yeah, like one maybe at Center Street or four.
Is there, I mean, um, train, I'm training, is there like a license plate for it? Well, they have laws of who's rolling through the, they have, and, you know, there's a law.
So, they just take the time?
Yeah.
I mean, just depend on how much you wanna do. Just like you go through a toll booth and you blow through without paying, like.
Right.
Yeah, so if you hit a certain speed, I've been places where I've been sent speeding tickets in the mail from a camera on a radar stand.
I wouldn't be opposed to, to, you know, funding, get, budgeting that technology.
Great. Dan actually proposed that to us. It's a system called Lydar. I remember him standing there four years ago. It, it's a, it's an automated system called Lydar, and I, I, at the time, it was a handheld device that it, um, it's, it's a civil penalty, not a, not a criminal penalty, if you don't pay. But, uh, but I'm sure they have the technology to put a stationary device, they, but it's a, it's a system called Lydar, but Dan actually is already shocked or before.
That'd be great. I would, I would sponsor that, sort of amendment or whatever.
Tech rep thing, at certain speeds, it gets off.
Um, and going back to Portsmouth, I, I did see, I think you can go as low as four miles an hour through city lanes. I didn't wanna do that, but, you know.
Yeah, it's been pretty, I mean, the whole city.
Yes.
You could not get, I tried to get around and couldn't even, like, go down this thing, can't still there, probably barely okay.
So, I don't, I don't necessarily know how to find out, but Portsmouth, I, I know, I know how you can go as low as four miles an hour. But, um, if we need to include, if we need to make an amendment to this ordinance to include, uh, what, uh, chief proposed, I'm, I'm fine with that too.
Look at the technology first, just see what there is. We also have to get more folks, other private, put it in the right way.
I think right now they're probably even giving them a, 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 a.
They've got a power. We can hang off of that.
I think it would be a good taste for us to at least, um, send them a certified letter that we have this proposed legislation. If they would like to address us, they won't, but I think it would be a good pace to do it. Um, in case there's something on their end that, that they would like to let us know that impairs their ability to operate or whatever. I'll, I'll be shocked if they comment whatsoever, but I, I would like to give them an opportunity to.
We need to send a certified letter. Uh, could you just want to send a certified letter of the ordinance? Has it included the ordinance in there? Okay. Any other discussion on this? All right, moving on to ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six. Uh, would you please give that first reading, Bob?
Authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Metro Fulton Housing Authority and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Fines may give this ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six a favorable recommendation. So, I would like to suspend the rules and give ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six second third reading by title only.
Jacob?
So, we can set twenty-three, twenty-four.
No, 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 we, we, twenty-four, we gave first reading on the twenty-four train.
Okay, uh, I'll second that motion.
So, we gotta have a, uh, motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six. Uh, roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Uh, rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six. Would you please give that second, third reading by title only?
Authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Metro Fulton Housing Authority and declaring an emergency, second reading. Authorizing directing the mayor to enter into a contract with Metro Fulton Housing Authority and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Chris? You gonna go? Hmm? Question? To adopt. Adopted, favorited, adopted between, adopt twenty-three, twenty-six? Twenty-six, adopt twenty-four, twenty-six. Hey, I have a motion. Jacob?
I'll second.
I have a motion by Chris and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six. Roll call please.
Harry.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-six has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight. Would you please give that first reading?
Creating North Ironton Stormwater Flood Pump Fund, Fund Forty-Six, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
Yeah, uh, fines may give ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight favorable recommendation. And I would like to suspend the rule and give a second, third reading by title only.
Jacob?
Second.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight. Would you please give it a second, third, read by title only?
Creating North Ironton Stormwater Flood Pump Fund Forty, Fund Forty-Six and declaring an emergency, second reading. Creating North Ironton Stormwater Flood Pump Fund Forty-Six and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob, I think motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight. Second, second, I have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to adopt ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-eight has been adopted. Uh, moving on to ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine. Would you please give that first reading?
Creating Water Equipment Replacement Fund, Fund Seventy, and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob?
The fines may give this ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine favorable recommendation. And I would like to suspend the rules and give a second, third read by title only.
Chris, I have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine has been adopted. Or, I'm sorry, the rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine. Uh, would you please give that second, third read by title only?
Creating Water Equipment Replacement Fund, Fund Seventy, and declaring an emergency, second reading. Creating Water Equipment Replacement Fund, Fund Seventy, and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob?
I think motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine.
I'll second.
Chris, I have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to adopt ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine. Roll call please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk. Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, twenty-nine has been adopted. Moving on to ordinance twenty-three, thirty. Would you please give that first reading?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, Ohio for the fiscal year in December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency, first reading.
Bob, the finance committee give ordinance twenty-three, thirty favorable recommendation. And I'd like to suspend the rules and give a second, third read by title only.
Jacob.
Second.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to suspend the rules for ordinance twenty-three, thirty. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
The rules have been suspended for ordinance twenty-three, thirty. Would you please give it a second and third read by title only?
Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year in December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency, third reading. Amending the permanent operating budget for the city of Ironton, state of Ohio for the fiscal year in December thirty-one, two thousand twenty-three and declaring an emergency, third reading.
Bob.
Big motion to adopt ordinance twenty-three, thirty.
Jacob.
I'll second.
I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to adopt ordinance twenty-three, thirty. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-three, thirty has been adopted. Jacob.
I'd like to, I'd like to make a motion to take amended ordinance twenty-two, eighty off the table.
Amendment ordinance twenty-two, eighty.
The title.
I got it. I have a motion, uh, to, to untable ordinance twenty-two, eighty. I'll second that. I have a motion by Jacob and a second by myself to untable ordinance twenty-two, eighty. Roll call, please. There, do you have discussion?
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance twenty-two, eighty has been tabled. Jacob. Or, or un, I'm sorry, untabled.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt amended ordinance twenty-two, eighty.
Give it a third reading?
Yeah.
I have a motion by, I'll second, but I'm. We have a motion by Jacob and a second by Bob to give ordinance twenty-two, eighty, amended ordinance twenty-two, eighty, first reading.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
At his definition to section one-two-five-oh-point-zero-five of the power five ordinances of the city of Ironton, Ohio, third reading.
Jacob.
I'd like to make a motion when we adopt amended ordinance twenty-two, eighty.
I'll second the motion. I have a motion by Jacob and a second by Bob to adopt amended ordinance twenty-two, eighty. Roll call, please.
Can I have a discussion?
Discussion.
Um, I'm sure I did not recall if it was, it's somebody language.
Language. Jacob, he's not.
It's language pulled from O R C and O A C to define, um, recovery housing, outpatient treatment, outpatient treatments, and, uh, it's amended to add means of business that, to that.
Just have a reading, uh.
Good.
When was it tabled? Or was it ever tabled? Cause it's twenty-two.
It was tabled.
It was tabled for public hearing.
When?
Um, three years ago. Feb- uh, February ninth, I think.
Was it tabled or was it sent to the planning commission?
It was tabled.
It was tabled.
I was just, I'm not saying like, is it the first, is this the first reading?
No.
Third. But I thought, I saw you had.
I called Brigham and talked to him about it. This is the course of action.
Okay, so this isn't like where normally when you table, you have to pull it off the table the next meeting.
That's not true either, uh.
But then Brigham came back and said that.
No, and then Brigham came back and said that the new, the new Roberts rules of order say that you can, you can do that any time. That Mac was going on the old Rob- rules, Robert rules of order, which just got updated last year. And so they both have to re-read them and, and it, the new, the new interpretation was that it could be at, at any point.
See, I thought just exactly opposite of that.
It wasn't, that's why we pulled it.
Great, I can, I can call Brigham, but I talked to him right before this meeting and this, this is what he recommended. I don't mind giving.
I was looking at being in twenty-two and thinking, did it get tabled for?
No, which is why, which is why, so when we amended it, the public hearing got pushed back because it couldn't be part of the public hearing because it got.
Yeah, I remember that. I was just making sure this wasn't the first meeting, second meeting.
It's been on there for a while. Uh, roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Ordinance, amended ordinance twenty-two, eighty has been adopted. Um, moving on to resolutions. Uh, would you please give reading to resolution twenty-three, twenty-five?
Authorizing the mayor to purchase property for the North Ironton Stormwater Flood Pump and declaring an emergency.
Bob.
Uh, finance committee give this favorable recommendation. I'd like to go ahead and, and pass resolution twenty-three, twenty-five.
Chris. Um, I just wanna quick discussion about this, just make note, uh, that this is a part of the, uh, enormous, uh, undertaking of the North End, um, storm water, uh, system upgrades. We have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris, uh, to pass resolution twenty-three, twenty-five.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-five is passed. Moving on to resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven. Would you please give that reading?
Authorizing use of employee dishonesty and faithful performance of a duty policy for officers, employers and appointees of the city of Ironton, Ohio, declaring an emergency.
Bob, the finance committee give resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven favorable recommendation. And I'd like to make a motion to get it passed, resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven.
I'll second. Chris. I have a motion by Bob and a second by Chris to pass resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Aye.
Resolution twenty-three, twenty-seven is passed. Moving on to resolution twenty-three, thirty-one. Would you please give that reading?
Resolution authorizing the entering into an administrative contract for the city of Ironton, South Burke Street, E D A grant and declaring an emergency.
Bob.
The finance committee give resolution twenty-three, thirty-one a favorable recommendation. So I'd like to make a motion to pass resolution twenty-three, thirty-one. Jacob.
Uh, second that motion.
I've got a quick discussion on this. Mayor, John, did you, did you guys discuss, did you guys, did you find out what you, you know, this is Third Street Waterline and, and paving, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, John had called me before the meeting and I didn't have the information.
Yeah, it's just for O V R D C to administer the grant, cause federal grant requires someone other than your typical, who, who filed the grant application.
I just wanna make sure we're good, we're, we're.
We are, sir.
Thank you. Okay. Uh, I have a motion by Bob and a second by Jacob to pass resolution twenty-three, thirty-one. Roll call, please.
Cleary.
Aye.
Hany.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Hawk.
Aye.
Klein.
Aye.
Harry.
Resolution twenty-three, thirty-one is passed. Uh, moving on to Ms. Langus, uh, we have Mr. Perry, uh, with a couple of things in Ms. Langus here. Or, oh, sorry, Craig.
No, I don't, I don't care, I'm definitely getting, or counseling.
That's right, Craig.
I just wanted to see if, um, Mr. Sel had an update.
Yeah.
So, uh, yes, and speaking with, uh, with supplier, with I N G, it looks like, um, if they can legally do anything, they will. So, um, they recommend to, yes, have a special meeting on Monday if you can. Um, there's twenty-one billing cycles, so they miss three days by delaying it, by instead of executing and starting the process tomorrow, instead of starting it on Tuesday, they'll miss three billing cycle days. So they could potentially have those folks that get filled on those days not get the new rate. So you might have some, you, you probably will have several hundred folks that get sent back to A E P for, for a month.
Three day, for a month.
For a month.
Three days is better, three.
Correct.
Say, man, a month.
Right.
Or we say three.
So it, it. It looks like there's about six hundred forty-four folks that are within these three billing days. So there's about thirty, thirty-nine fifty, I think, total enrollments. So, that many folks, it looks like could get sent back to the utility. If you all proceed with that and enter into emergency legislation on Monday, if they can legally do something with that, which they're gonna review tomorrow, they will. So I recommend to do it on Monday if you're able to.
Um, are you, so their contract for point eight seven, that doesn't go, that, that lasts through, I mean. But wouldn't it be based off when their meters read? So like their meter reading for tomorrow would be early prior to like May. So they're reading for May.
So how they, um, were, being the incumbent and being this late in the process, I know I N G was trying to push it back to the last possible day where they could hold over as many folks as they needed to at that old rate and then bring in the new folks that are just with A E P for a June start. By delaying that process, we're gonna miss some billing cycle days. So it looks like, you know, it looks like they wouldn't be able to, to get everyone, everybody in, in hold.
I, I guess, like, mine's read on the second for April, that, like, right, and then do like in the middle of the month, so. Like mine will be read on the six-two for my May, so I would anticipate my base, it'll still be four point eight seven.
Right.
So as long as this would give into effect by June, right, wouldn't it still come?
So from what I've been, and again, just kind of, you know, working up against the wall at the last minute, um, tonight.
I understand, I understand their urgency, I see a county, but they carry all the way to, you know, their, their meter reading isn't going to, for June isn't even gonna happen.
It's because it takes a certain amount of days for them to notify a year ago and register on the odd notice for that following month. And they have, it's scheduled down to announce legislation tomorrow, contract tomorrow execution, and then that process starts from pretty early. Because they have to delay it Saturday, Sunday, Friday, really, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, and then they do it on Tuesday, which is pushing, they were already up against the wall. So now they're just at a point where they can't legally guarantee that they can get everybody in this hole, but they, they can do everything they can.
Listen, so listen.
Um, cause even after they can, from middle of the year, it's like, you know, grand. No, fifty thousand dollar grant's still there, um, and the, the market, if the market were to move as well, the price could move a little up or down at all, so. Procedure, we consider that not, the price was from today, right, in the market.
Yeah, Chris, I was wondering where everyone else is, when they want to argue, uh, outside.
So that, there's, there's other competitors out there, I N G is the lowest right now, so not only are they the incumbent and in a good position to be able to provide a whole different rate, if you will, for a month, they also have a little bit, so they're both.
But we have to do that.
Right now, so, yeah, we could, we could definitely do something on Monday, um. You know, the, the rates could move slightly in one way or the other based upon the market movement. And some folks might end up getting, going back to any rate for a month, but the vast majority, I think, if they're legally allowed, they'll probably have it. They'll do everything, the main reason.
To, uh, regarding, uh, the community aggregation program. So what, what we're gonna go ahead and do is we're gonna call, um, special meeting on Monday, the. Sorry. The Monday is seventeenth, Tuesday the eighteenth, and Wednesday the nineteenth, four forty-five regarding the community aggregation, uh, energy aggregation plans. Um, we have to schedule three meetings, but, but we intend, if we can get six, six council members here, we intend on, uh, you know, suspend the rules and move ahead with this legislation. So we're gonna go ahead and call Monday seventeen, Tuesday eighteenth, Wednesday nineteenth, four forty-five, council chambers, special meeting regarding, uh, community aggregation.
Okay, I'll refresh that day as well, the market moves every day, so it could move slightly up or slightly down the price. I'll do everything I can to hold it, right?
So it also goes.
Yeah, so I, I really appreciate you guys adjusting.
Yeah, question.
Yes.
Why did it end up being such a day deadline?
Um, we didn't, we didn't, we weren't able to get, I wasn't able to get in front of you until today. So I've been, I've been trying to get in front of you and I wasn't able to, so here's the first, the first opportunity I have, and so I'm here.
So you have, like, you have our emails by chance?
Um, I know they're on the website and I pass out all my cards. You guys feel free to reach out anytime and yeah, I'll be in touch with you all directly about this as we move forward as well.
Before I take off, I'll be.
Thank you so much. For sure. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Any other Slaneys, not other than Chris? Good, um, I do wanna give a quick update for, uh, I've spoken with Brett Towns regarding, uh, pedal tournament. He's moved forward with that. He is trying to get an event coordinator on for us, um, to, to kinda take the reins because a lot of it last year. First event, we did a lot of the work, um, you know, in, in Goof for Brett and, uh, third and center, but he, Brett's wanting to get, get somebody centralized and said, I was working on this. And it's allowed working on that. He wanna get somebody that kinda steers, steers the boat, so, um, he was supposed to call somebody or contact him this afternoon, this evening. He's gonna, he's gonna let us know, uh, plans for that, um, as soon as possible, we're not, uh, but, Jacob.
Sorry, you have, there you are. Um, this is all that, um, you, your part is, yeah, okay. Are we accepting or are we looking for sponsors for this?
I'm sure we would take, yeah, first, probably one hundred percent, but, uh.
Couple people were double, they must have expressed interest in.
Good deal.
Awesome, sorry. Um, at our Public Utilities Committee meeting on, uh, March twenty-third, we were discussing, um, a discussion that we had, a meeting that we had in twenty nineteen. And Mike Pierce wanted me to relay that that was scanned and, and I just confirmed with John that it was scanned and emailed to everybody. Um, he asked that everyone, uh, review the legislation and review the discussion. Yeah, and provide any recommended changes to me through, or in, uh, by email, um, and he just wanted me to relay that, the discussion.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I, well.
I, I, there's a logistical issue with that table. I read the email and Max said, indicated there was no time limit. After reviewing Roberts, for former editions of Roberts did not set a time limit. The newest version does require that a matter which is tabled must be considered at the next regular meeting or the matter dies. One thing is, I don't think it was tabled. It was referred to.
It was referred to the point.
So I think you missed the reading is what I'm saying, like, I'm thinking you would have your second, third reading.
It had second, cause it's on the agenda for, uh, when did you? It was referred.
Traveler. Traveler, you're not.
I was saying, that's what this reads, I would, they said they were available for a phone call, you might wanna. I'm not saying that you can't do it, I just think that it might have been the way that it went about, just now was not related.
Could I add a call?
That would just be better than bringing it back in another meeting, if, you know.
I looked all through this, I looked all through the minutes and everything. I think we're gonna have to look at, like, the recording, but Matt may remember.
I think it was a different table thing, that he was talking about.
That's made enough, that's made enough from January.
What? He, it had been referred to planning commission. It couldn't come back until after a public hearing, which you had, right, just had. So now it's coming back, so that should be the second, or figure.
We, we gave it first and second.
How did?
Because we had, we had to give it second to amend it. We gave it first reading, then we gave it second reading to amend it. And that's the reason it got pushed back from the original public hearing from all the others. We had, we had like four pieces of legislation, we had the public hearing for it, but it got its own separate public hearing.
How did we make sure it wasn't tabled? Yeah, um, just based on what they.
And you're right, procedurally, if it, if it, you're right. If it's, if it's moved to the planning commission, it will just come back on our.
Yeah, yes.
Which, and so makes this, okay.
Should I give, should I give Mac a call to make sure that we?
I would, because that's a problem, being on the agenda. Wouldn't want that to happen, has to happen.
Hey, Mac. You're just on speakerphone, we're in council, and, uh, needing clarification on steps to take for ordinance twenty-two eighty. Um, we talked about it last, uh, meeting, and, uh, I spoke with Brigham right before, but I'm, we, we may be under the mistaken impression that it was tabled, or it was referred.
Yeah, it was referred to the planning commission. Yeah, you, uh, the planning commission's already made on everything, and it's back before you guys, you see?
But it wasn't on the agenda.
Okay, it wasn't on the agenda. Um. It wasn't, is, do you know it was referred and tabled?
Yes. As far as, yeah, yeah, that's the.
Referred.
And tell them that you guys.
They can just vote to. Well, I mean, the sentence not on the agenda. I'm talking to bring here too. Yeah, yeah. They can bring it all the time. You're thinking it was referred to the planning commission rather than tabled, right?
Yeah, it might have, uh.
Yeah, if that's the case, you'll have to put it on the next council agenda.
I've got the news right here for the planning commission, yeah.
Yeah, now, if it was tabled, then you could vote to, you know, make a motion to bring it off the table.
If ever, if it depiles, uh, second.
But if, if it was referred to the planning commission, then some, you'd have to request that we put it on the agenda now that the planning commission's put it up.
Okay, so.
How do you?
I don't know, like, there, I'm going to pass it. So, earlier in the meeting.
Well, tabled, it was referred.
Uh, I made a motion to untable. It, it's the case that it was never tabled, how do we remedy? Is there a process to, like, rescind that decision?
Oh, so you, you made a motion to take it off the table, it's been voted on and everything?
Yeah.
Yeah, uh, you, someone just had to make a note in the minutes that, uh, you checked that it was not tabled, so that, that motion would become a novelty, the decision.
Okay.
It wasn't tabled, you can't take it off the table, decision.
Okay, it's just, uh, yeah.
I just make a, a note in the minutes that it was determined, uh, that, uh, ordinance, whatever, twenty-two, or twenty-three eighty, was, was it twenty-two eighty?
Twenty-two eighty.
Uh, yeah, had not been tabled, and therefore the motion to repeal the table was novelty. And then, any councilman can then ask that it be put on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
All right, bye.
Okay, for, for the record, please, let's, let's note that twenty-two eighty, uh, moved the ordinance twenty-two eighty was never tabled, it was referred to the planning commission, planning commission, uh, favorably recommended it. I, I made the motion, uh, Mr. Powell's, uh, segmented that motion, so it was favorably recommended by the planning commission. Now, we intend to put it back on the agenda for next meeting, well, we could, for all the, or Monday.
Special, um, special.
We could, add that to the special, yeah, yeah. Everybody get with that? So the Monday's, um, special meeting will also include, uh, third reading of amended ordinance twenty-two eighty, uh, put up the vote. So we've got, uh, two things on the agenda for the special meeting Monday. Third reading for order, amended ordinance twenty-two eighties, um, and then legislation regarding the, the community, uh, energy aggregation plan.
Does he have to rescind that motion?
It's not, we're just, yeah, it's just make note in the minutes that, that it was, it was, it was referred and not tabled. All right, um, moving along, Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Good job.
Oh, John, sorry.
Um, I put a reminder out that there were, was, um, forms that were required by the state auditor. Um, and I just was reminding you to see if you all brought those tonight.
You have a stern mind.
Fill them out.
You have, you have a stern mind already, right, Joe?
Yes.
I, I need to get a couple of forms off, because I've got, I need, I need, if you stick around, because I need to plug your office. I need that, I need something else. Um, one other thing, before Chris gets started. Uh, I have explanation, guys, we remind, that, that's coming up a lot sooner than, than, I always forget to, to remind everybody, but who's gonna get that in?
Um, I lost my, I'm gonna take a hundred percent loss.
Uh, yes. All right, moving on with Chris.
Thanks a lot. Uh, Mayor, thanks for, uh, introducing Chief Johnson tonight, perfect timing. Um, I'd like to, uh, give a special recommendation, uh, special recognition, is what I'm trying to say, uh, to IPD and Chief Johnson, uh, regarding two, uh, specific incidents that happened on the same day, uh, this past Monday, at the domestic island shelter. Um, there's a, a petitioner, uh, looking for, uh, protective order that's been, uh, residing with us for a short period of time. You guys will be shocked to know that the domestic island shelter, supposed to be an anonymous place to be, you can Google, you wanna find it, look for them, Google. So the, uh, respondent found her, showed up and was harassing her up front of the building. Uh, the director of the, uh, shelter called the police, and within just a very couple of minutes, uh, three officers showed up, took her report, uh, he was long gone. Uh, I'm sure he sat around the corner, waiting for them to leave. Uh, fifteen, twenty minutes later, I doubled back, as the director was leaving, I happened to pull up, walked in the office and heard her having a shouting match with this guy. I checked on her, and he's encouraging her to come out to the alley, get out to the other right now, and so on and so forth. Uh, I was able to be a part of that conversation on audio recording, then, uh, went out to the alley, he was at the end, got a photo of the vehicle, uh, as I approached his vehicle, he spotted a tire, took off, got away. Uh, called Joe Ross, figured it was faster than ninety-one, he called a couple of officers. Again, they were there in record time, uh, and took, uh, took another incident report from her, from me on that second incident. Uh, so Chief, thank you, uh, for, for the great work that IPD is doing. I would like to point out, this is on the same day that the horrible shooting happened in Louisville, you know, so, uh, it's kind of like nine eleven, when everybody else is running away from the thing, police and fire are running to it, so. That'd be very much a rewrapping response, Chief. Um, on to a couple of economic development updates. Um, we got, we, we got an opportunity to partner with a couple of different, I guess I'll call them businesses, they're, they're really not for profit, but, um, one of them is UFI, that's Unlimited Futures Incorporated in Huntington. My dad is actually one of the four founding members of this, uh, this, this business. They offer business coaching, uh, classes, career training, tuition assistance, small business incubator. And the second person, or second, I'm sorry, second business that we have the opportunity to partner with, uh, is Colefield Development, Colefield Development, uh, it's a great story, I'm not gonna take up time, I just encourage anybody to go in and read how they came to be, it's a, it's a pretty, it's a really pretty cool story. Uh, but, uh, they are partnering currently with UFI in Huntington, and they have a six-week program and also a six-month program, is my understanding, I don't really have a fuzzy on what the difference is. But for each of those programs, uh, the folks that are enrolled in the programs in Huntington, they are learning, uh, the technology to, to work on, to, to fabricate, to prepare, uh, fiber optics. And for anybody that's, uh, is in the program, they earn four hundred dollars a week, while they're learning this trade. So where Ironton has the opportunity to partner with that, is that, uh, my dad's looking to open satellite branch to UFI here in Ironton, so I've been actively looking for commercial spaces. Too bad I'm not, uh, when he did, uh, I might have looked at, uh, a commercial space that he's got, but I'm still looking for several, uh, that we could choose from. Uh, the, the, the goal is to find a place here in Ironton, uh, have a kickoff meeting, uh, with the mayor, council president, and, uh, several other people up to it, including vice president of Colefield Development, uh, Marilyn Wren, she will, uh, have plenty of, plenty of answers for questions that we've got, and help us get that program set up, so it's, uh, it, it's, they're, they're developed to, to give an expansion strategy, uh, employment-based enterprise, trauma-enforced support, I mean, these are all, these are all key words to, uh, to, to, to a workforce readiness situation in, in any community, so, uh, in fact, they have a program called RAP, Workforce Readiness and Professional Services. So they, uh, they're excited to come to Ironton. They would have at least three or four instructors that would be paying, uh, city income taxes. We're still trying to determine whether or not those twenty or twenty-five students who would be getting paid would also maybe be paying into income taxes, if it's in form of a stipend, then it's probably not likely. But if, uh, if it's just good old-fashioned taxable revenue, then that would be, you know, twenty or twenty-five more, pieces of revenue for the city. Um, let's see. On to an issue that, um, I discovered regarding commercial property here in Ironton. Got a business in Cincinnati that is looking to possibly create a call center. They told me this about six months ago, and talks kind of died off, and they reached back out to me about a month ago. First place that came to my mind is the US Bank, with those upper floors being available. And, uh, so I talked to, talked to the, uh, commercial, the, uh, commercial enterprise representative there in the building, he put me in touch with the, uh, folks at corporate, uh, that are, that are dealing with it on the back end. Turns out, LADC is looking to purchase the bank, which, you know, is not necessarily a horrible thing, uh, at least not initially. But two chief concerns that I've got is that none of this was mentioned to this body. Uh, not that it has to be, but maybe just out of courtesy, uh, you know, everybody sitting up here's got, a vested interest in seeing Ironton succeed, and, uh, you know, any member of council, would agree that the sheer number of vacant and unused commercial, commercial properties in Ironton, it leaves our, leaves our economy at the mercy of property owners. Whether the property owners want to cooperate, or they want to open a business or not, um, it, it just kind of leaves us in a, leaves us in a quandary. So, um, I had a, uh, hour and a half conversation with Dr. Davis yesterday. Uh, it was, it was a great conversation both ways, uh, but, uh, you know, at the end of the day, I totally must speak for, uh, people that hired me to do this job, and I've spoken to several people on council. Um, most were not aware of this, uh, this, this thing happening, you know, there's a, there's a perception that goes on with LADC that things happen in Ironton, uh, and nobody knows about it until it's the sun bears. Uh, you know, I think in the mayor's defense, uh, Dr. Davis maybe put the mayor in a bit of a jackpot by asking the mayor to not have the discussion with anybody. Um, I personally, my, my personal belief is, uh, he shouldn't have, probably shouldn't have asked the mayor to do that. He said, client wanted to keep the sale confidential. I don't know any in steel on the planet that is a bigger capitalist than a bank, and I just can't imagine that a bank wouldn't want to have multiple bids. Not privy to all of the specific details behind it, but, uh, you know, when, when there's something as sizable, literally and figuratively, happening in downtown Ironton, uh, it's, uh, and, and most or all of us are not aware of it, it's just a, it's, it's just a bad look. If we don't know about it, then it's clear ten thousand people in Ironton probably don't know about it either. So, uh, the real issue that I've got is a private entity selling to another private entity, I, I totally understand that, but when we're sitting looking at it, or to what should probably be the crown jewel of property, commercial property in Ironton, between Vernon and Park, between second and third, and three quarters of that city block is sitting unused, almost falling in on itself, uh, fifteen years under construction. Thank God for the Park Street apartments for that entire block to be sitting in. Uh, that's just a, that, that's a bad situation. When I, when I drive through Ashland, um, and I look at Greenham Avenue, just Greenham, uh, Greenham Avenue from, uh, I don't know, from the AT&T store, going all the way down to Taco Bell. Somebody over there made a concerted effort fifteen, twenty years ago, that they were gonna turn Ashland into something, and they have. Uh, I mean, I remember when I was a kid, Ashland wasn't in the best shape, and, and they, they've done, they've done something the right way. So I don't really know what we need to do, you know, to, to turn a corner on things here in Ironton, but, you know, most of the river cities, when I look at Fort Munson, Wiltshire, Ashland, Huntington, doubtless, uh, feels like Ironton, you know, has somehow been left behind. I'm not pointing the finger, blaming anybody in particular, but, uh, I for one, take my fiduciary responsibility to, uh, to the city of Ironton, uh, very seriously. And as the, uh, you know, chair of the Commercial and Industrial Committee, which is very heavily tied to, uh, the economic success of Ironton and economic development, it's frustrating to see that, uh, we've got so many properties that are out of touch or out of reach, so, um, I think that, uh, you know.
You wanna call a meeting, or for natural, because this would probably be better off, it's good than, than that type of meeting.
Yeah, I, I definitely want to talk to you, um. Couple of things, let me wrap up here, um. Some people who are outside of the community have, uh, have said that, and this, this really rates me the wrong way, Ironton should accept our fate and become the next Rome Township. To become a bedroom community to Ashland, like Rome Township is hunting. I, I, I say hell no, I, 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 I don't, I don't, I don't like that. I think there's plenty of life left in Ironton, uh, we've just got to reengage our own economic development apparatuses. It was innate and, and great, we're fantastic in getting CIC, uh, getting all the licenses and the certification ready to go for that and getting it off the ground. I think that, uh, you know, at some point we need to really take a closer look at getting a, uh, port authority back in Ironton, precedent set. There'd been, there was an Ironton port authority, a large kind of port authority, so you know that's not something that, uh, is out of the ground. And I think that we can still continue to partner with, uh, with the grant providers that we use, GUR. Doesn't mean we have to sever any relationships, you know, the analogy that I used to somebody was it's like when the lottery, it's up to five hundred million dollars, some of them ridiculous. If one parent is a stay-at-home parent and the at-work parent does most of the stuff out and out and yet the at-work parent says, I'm gonna stop and pick up some lottery tickets for us, but the at-home parent is out running errands and whatever, shouldn't that parent maybe pick up a couple lottery tickets too, if that's the way I look at it? We've already got a great situation of CAO, we've all, uh, we've all admitted that, uh, for the little bit that we pay CAO, the return on investment, I mean, it just, it, it makes perfect sense. But if we have the ability to apply for our own grants here in I, as part of our own economic development team, CIC, the port authority, whatever it is, then that just gives us more opportunities to be awarded those grants. So, um, the good news is, uh, a small team of us, council president, Haney, John and I are heading to ICA tomorrow for a CIC workshop. We'll be asking a ton of questions, hopefully come back with a ton of answers, uh, up to it including how they utilize their CIC to purch- to purchase, uh, former commercial properties for the advantage of the clear city. That's what I'd like to see happen in Ironton. Last thing, here's a little history lesson, uh, and this is, uh, tied to the bedroom community comment that really pisses me off. In the history of our country, there have been four, I'm sorry, thirteen towns named in Ironton. All were so named because of large profits of iron ore. They range from Ironton to, Ironton, New York, Ironton, Minnesota, uh, Ironton, Missouri, Ironton, Louisiana, Ironton, Ohio, and a whole bunch in total. Ironton, Ohio, however, was the most successful because at one time we were the only Ironton in the country that was within a twelve-hour drive of three quarters of the United States. Keep in mind, you know, a lot of the United States that we know today wasn't there then, but that being said, Ironton is still a twelve-hour drive to nearly half the population of the United States. I didn't believe it, I Googled it, and it's true. You get to Boston in twelve and a half hours, you get to New Orleans in twelve and a half hours. You get to Kansas City in eight hours, you know, so population center-wise, you know, Ironton, Ohio is, is a special place. Not to mention we have the river of rare. So, um, I really think that, uh, the commenter made the bedroom community and put that inter-bedroom community in smoke. Just feel like we've got to figure out a way to reinvest and reinvent ourselves, so thanks.
Thank you.
Chris, I, one thing I keep seeing, I know you're chair of the industrial and commercial committee, but I feel that in this role, this chair, our role is to legislate and appropriate. And I feel like the role, the action of trying to procure business, try to facilitate, da-da-da, oh, that, I feel like that's not the role of council.
If not us, then who? If not now, then when?
Our charter states that we're to legislate and appropriate. And it's approaching a role of the mayor.
Okay.
So I think it's, I think it's very, I think we're responsible to respect the charter.
Okay.
As far as the CIC, that was established with the intent of being able to, uh, sell or transfer property, uh, condemned property that the city may own to, uh, interest for days without the process necessary for a bid.
Yes.
The intent is actually that. As far as privy to transactions of entities outside of here, I don't, I don't really necessarily agree with that, uh, your assessment on that. I, I, matter of fact, I feel like it was just the opposite. As far as, I don't know that maybe it was LEDC that was contacting the bank wanting to buy that, however, I feel like maybe it was vice versa. So as far as the city being able to financially take on projects like that, you know, that's, that's possible. Ironton Port Authority failed for a reason. So, uh, and while I, and while I don't, and I don't agree with everything with Dr. Davis, I don't agree with everything from the LEDC, for example. I don't really agree with the dollar, I don't want that there. I don't, I don't always agree with everybody that sits up here. I don't always agree with this mayor. And I'll let you guys know. So, uh, while I don't agree with all of you all the time, I don't agree with the mayor all the time, I don't agree with Dr. Davis all the time, I try to keep respectful. Like I am right now with you and try to work the best out of this. I'll live with that.
I, for fun, um, and there's very little that you said that I disagree with, Nate, um, I mean, for the record, I'm sure Dr. Davis would, would agree. Hour, hour and a half long conversation was very difficult, it was enlightening, most of it to me, I think he was, he was enlightened as well. You know, but whether, whether it's in the charter that we are to legislate and appropriate or not, I go back to my statement. If not us, then who? And if not now, then when? Because the bottom line is, we are in book. We're sitting in the Jason Penn building, this was a private entity, it's now the city building. The city somehow figured out how they were gonna purchase this building where I used to go upstairs and watch Santa Claus, to turn it into a city building. So to say that it can't, shouldn't, won't, I, I, I have to disagree or push back on that because at the end of the day, a city's economic health is only as, as healthy as, as commercial properties will allow it to be. Now, if I stepped on toes, Mayor, listen, I apologize, if I stepped on toes going out and trying to market and sell Ironton, yeah, okay, I guess I can die all the way back. But when I, when I look at what Ironton can be, uh, it's, it's frustrating to me that I look at a quarantine here and there's three quarters of the city block falling in on itself, doing nothing, not generating revenue, not generating income, not, not being up to code, I mean, not, 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 there's, there's a hundred things, you know. So at, at the end of the day, and, and as far as the respectful, Nate, yes, you're totally respectful here, uh, I try to be as respectful as I can be, uh, to people as well. But there comes a point where I, I, I get pretty frustrated when I see Wielersburg, Ohio, population six thousand, and they're in the black for the next hundred years. We're ten thousand strong, we're the county seat, love that phrase by the way, I use it often. For God's sake, we are still the county seat. And when Ironton as the county seat is potentially not as, it, it's potentially not the most prosperous community in a county, there's, there's, there's a problem.
Jake.
I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss personnel in the state with no action to follow.
You don't need it.
Council, uh, the mayor, uh, John.
The solicitors.
And the solicitors by, if possible, that's okay.
Got a motion by Jake, we're gonna be executive session. Fred.
If it's two minutes, I'll say.
Got a motion by Jake, the same by Craig, we're gonna be in our executive session regarding personnel. Go call please.
Entering. Clearing. Haney.
Aye.
Harvey.
Aye.
Pop.
Aye.
Tom.
Aye.
Here.
Aye.
Thank you guys for attending, we're now entering executive session.